Here. I didn't do that.
Jumples out?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, these are troubling times, both in the Middle East and in Europe. Please take those individuals in Spain who are starving and those individuals in Greece who are without food and housing. And please help try to provide for them. And the people who are dying, in the name of freedom in the Middle East, please accept them into your heart as they fight the righteous fight. In your Lord, please give us, as Board of Supervisors, the wisdom to make the right decisions this evening in the furtherance of Frederick County and those items which are going to affect the citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, will you leave us in a pledge of allegiance?
Please stand face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no additions.
Consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven is your second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing in all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. The agenda is adopted. Now consent agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab E, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission Report, and tab F, Human Resources Committee Report.
Right. You've heard the recommendation for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Spicer. Discussion. Hearing in all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Items E and F are on consent agenda. Citizen comments, Mr. Rowley, anyone sign up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two people, Tim Bosom to speak to deputies overtime. I believe he's a lawyer from Leesburg.
You said, okay, well, we did the second one. Would you come forward, sir? Please repeat your name and your firm and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay, I'll try to do that. Tim Bosom from the law firm Sim Showers in Leesburg, representing the sheriff deputies. As the board is aware, we provided a notice already about our claims. We have two claims for overtime. One is a gap pay claim under the new Virginia statute that was passed in 2005. The second one was for compensatory time claim. I just want to give some facts real quick on those claims to show the county's notice of these claims and the issues that we've got now. On the gap pay claim, the county, at least as of October 2006, we have a letter from the county attorney at that time showing that he was aware of the gap pay issue and that the county knew that the statute applied to the county. Instead of complying with the statute, though, the county came up, the county attorney came up with his own opinion that he didn't need to comply with the statute for certain reasons, which were the same reasons that were brought up in the Richmond case. I don't know if the board is familiar. This case has already been brought in Richmond, federal court. And in that case, the federal judge said there was no merit to those arguments. Those are the same arguments that the county attorney gave to not pay this overtime. It's pretty clear that the county should have paid the overtime and it still hasn't been paid. And the second issue that we've got is the compensatory time issue. The compensatory time by law, the FLSA, federal law, has to be paid or credited at time and a half when it's earned. In fact, the county's own employment handbook in section 4.4C, and I'll quote it, says that eligible employees may receive an amount of compensatory time at the rate of one and a half hours of compensatory time for each hour of overtime hours worked. Despite the fact the law in your handbook says that you'll pay comp time that way, the deputies were not paid comp time that way. They were paid comp time on a straight basis, clearly violating the law, clearly violating your handbook. The county is aware that they've been in violation of the gap pay statute and the comp time laws, and in fact, been doing these violations for over seven years now. The deputies are only able to sue for three years back. And that's what we've brought. We brought a claim for three years back. We also asked to double that claim under law because the county was aware of these statutes and they just chose to ignore them. The amount we're seeking is really not that great. If you count it all up, it's $110,000 between the two claims. And if you double that for the three years, it's $220,000 plus the attorney's fees, which are continuing to grow as we continue to fight this thing needlessly. My understanding is the county is willing to pay two years back, but clearly, when the county hasn't been doing the right thing for seven years, the appropriate thing is not to pay two years back, it's to pay the three years back doubled, which is six years, and still lets the county get out a year that they should have paid them this overtime. Now, the wrong response, in my opinion, is for the county to do what it's doing and it's trying to get out of this lawsuit on a technicality. We do think you're going to lose that. We're fighting that now, but nonetheless, it's not fair for the county who made all these decisions to blame the sheriff and try to get out.
As long as you aren't going to be excessive, I'll let you, if you had anything else, I'll let you continue.
I've only got one more line, so if you don't mind, thank you. Again, I was just saying that it's not fair for the county to get out of this lawsuit when the county made many of the decisions, even fought the sheriff, when he brought to the county's attention that they should be paying this gap time. And now the county wants to get out of the lawsuit and not pay anything. And that is not morally right. It's not going to be legally right. We don't think, we think we're going to win on that. But nonetheless, the county should do the right thing, which is stand up and pay these deputies for the three years back doubled, which again, is still not for all the time they've missed, the seven years or so that they weren't paid. So thank you. I appreciate your time. I don't know if you take questions now.
No, sir. Mr. Rowley, was there someone else?
Jay Martz.
If you'd repeat your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jay Martz. I'm in the Gainesboro Magisterial District and Chairman Schickel and members of the board. There's been a lot of good news, good economic news lately. I would like to first congratulate the Frederick County Economic Development Commission for bringing McKeeson Corporation to our town, our county. California company expanding in a right-to-work state. I think conservative principles and fiscal responsibility pays dividends. And speaking of which, I read, I see, I understand that we have a surplus of more than $13 million. We took in $8 million more in revenue and we spent $5 million less than expected. Good job, good work. The largest part of this revenue came from property taxes. Our county budget was amended this year to increase our property tax rates by 4% per $100. This was to generate about $3 million to pay for a state-mandated 5% salary increase for all government employees. The Board of Supervisors increased the employees' pay to also cover the additional taxes the employees would incur to make whole. I would ask that you keep, I would ask that you keep the FY13 budget where it is at with no increases. I assume you will use the surplus revenue to repay the $4.3 million fund balance that was borrowed to balance the 12 budget. I would also ask the board to make good use of the surplus. There are priority items that need to be addressed, maintenance, equipment, certain capital projects. However, I would say, please refrain from increasing the size of government, especially until the new provisions of the VRS mandatory hybrid retirement plan are in place beginning January 1, 2014. I think that would be prudent. Lastly, I would ask that our property tax rate be lowered to something close to what it was before, the 4.5 rate. I would remind you that every time you raise taxes to provide a pay increase to our county employees, our deserving county employees, that gives 2,700 folks a raise, while 49,000 property owners take a cut in their household budget. Now, keep in mind that as real estate market improves and home assessments may rise, most of that is a good equity increase for our property owners on paper, but the taxes are real and they come out of our pocket. So I would ask you to keep that in mind. And I'm sorry I wasn't here for the meeting, the earlier meeting. I heard a lot of good comments from what I did. One thing I didn't hear talked about was merit pay. We talk about keeping our most valuable employees here in the county from not driving across the mountain. I hear that a lot, but yet, we talk about giving them longevity pay increases. Well, what we need to do is we need to reward our best employees, and if somebody else wants to go across the mountain, that's their choice. That's their freedom. And also, on your priority items, I saw Parks and Recs on there. I love Parks and Recs, but $1 million for soccer light posts is not something that I would include on the priority list. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing done. We move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, September 12, 2012.
Chairman, I made for approval, is submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing in all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, September 12, 2012, are approved. Next, committee appointments. The first, I don't think we've had a response on the community policy management team. Have you, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're looking. Extension leadership council, are we ready for Red Bud?
I'm still looking for someone.
Member-at-large. That appears to be a recommendation from the council. Mr. Rowley, heard nothing?
No, sir.
All right. Then Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. I believe Mr. Lofton has some things.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will notice there are two papers in front of you for the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. One is an application from a lady who would like to serve on the advisory committee. The other is the resignation of one of the existing members. So that is another vacancy that would show on there. But tonight, I would like to recommend the appointment of Michelle Landon to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. I've spoken to Mrs. Landon. She seems very interested in helping out her community. She has the time, and I believe she would make a good member, and I would so move to appoint her to that committee.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing in all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Then Michelle Landon?
Landon, yes.
Landon is appointed to the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee, and Mr. Lofton still has a vacancy.
Yes, sir. And I do have a couple of applications, so I suspect that at our next meeting, I will have a recommendation to make for that other vacancy. Thank you.
All right, Board of Equalization. Gainesboro, are we ready?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman. I hope to have a name at the next meeting.
Board of Zoning Appeals, Opecken.
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And that concludes the committee appointment portion of the agenda, and we'll move on to the request of the county attorney for a refund. Is that you, Mr. Rowley? Or the county attorney?
I can handle it, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a refund to a Chapter 13 bankruptcy trustee for real estate taxes that were paid in error. The owner of the property, Keith Koch, co-owner, filed a Chapter 13 bankruptcy in 2010. The treasurer's office correctly filed the claim in the case, and then the owner of the property proposed the surrender of the property in exchange for as much of the tax liability as possible, which he's entitled to do. In the meantime, the trustee went ahead and paid the taxes on a periodic basis to the county, and then in doing his final accounting of the matter, actually interim accounting of the matter, ascertained that those taxes should not have been paid at this time because the surrender of the property serves to pay the first taxes that are due. If the county has an additional claim, it can file that claim and then be paid for that part of it with the general unsecured creditors later in the case. So in essence, the funds were incorrectly paid to the county ahead of schedule, so to speak, and under applicable law are properly refundable to the Chapter 13 trustee and thus the purpose for the refund request.
Questions to Mr. Williams. Hearing done. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the recommendation.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Discussion. Hearing done. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a memorandum from the county attorney in reference to sheriff's deputies administrative claims disposition. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the memorandum speaks for itself, and I think the board is well familiar with this matter and had one speaker on it tonight. Just in summary, a group of sheriff's deputies, both current and former, numbering 63 in total, through council, has submitted administrative claims seeking recovery for different amounts, both under what is called the gap pay statute, as well as under Fair Labor Standards, Federal Fair Labor Standards Act claim. Under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, the agenda materials have the representative sample of the letters. The letters are all the same for all 63 individuals, and their names are on the list that's attached rather than giving you 63 separate letters. Claims statute provides that the board has a period of 90 days to act on the claims. The claims were dated July 10, 2012, so the 90 days is coming up. The board can act as it deems appropriate on the claims by either approving in whole or in part, or denying or denying with conditions. There is a proposed resolution that has been laid before the board tonight that acts on them, which would deny the claims at this time without prejudice to them being refiled, but also authorize the making of a settlement offer that would release both the county and the sheriff. I can certainly entertain questions from the board on the matter, but that basically is the thumbnail sketch of the matter that's before the board, and if the appropriate time of the board wants that resolution read, and I can do so.
Questions?
Kevin, I have a question. Mr. Williams, the gentleman that spoke at the outset of the meeting cited a figure of $220,000, and there's a $73,000 figure in the resolution. Are we talking apples and oranges, or had a dispute that the county has with the litigants? Mr. Spicer, I believe there's two primary differences in the two calculations. And Mr. Bosom, who spoke, gets to the $220,000 first by doubling the amount that they've calculated citing the statutory provision that calls for double damages in cases where the violation is proven to be knowingly done. We strenuously disagree that the law was anything but clear on this subject during the time that these claims arose. So that gets us to the 110. And then there are some discrepancies in exactly how the dollar amount is calculated. The group is actually seeking to go back. It's a curious thing. The letters are dated July 10, 2012, but somehow they seek damages that go back to April 1, 2009. Anything before July 10, 2009 would be barred by even the most stringent statute of limitations against the county, namely a three-year statute of limitations. And then there may be some small discrepancies around the edges there that account for the rest of that difference, but that, Mr. Spicer, is the difference between the 70 versus the 220. Thank you.
Other questions? I just have one sort of a overview here. The letter that we were copying, of which there are 63, basically doesn't specify a amount and says, "We don't have the records. You have the records."
It does say that. We have exchanged summary records with council for the group in connection with the litigation, a spreadsheet that lists by pay period the dollar amounts. We've never received any written dispute or explanation as to any errors in that sheet. And that spreadsheet supports the $73,000 figure that is in the resolution that the board has.
So do you know if the larger amount is based on a calculation that's based on the 73 or something else?
I think it's based in significant part that there's a discrepancy because of the additional three months from 2009 that are clearly barred by the statute of limitations.
Other questions? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I understand it correctly, we are now going to the resolution, correct? We, the memorandum, the discussion was in support of the resolution, or that's the reason, the purpose for the resolution. Is that correct?
Hopefully, the chairman would hope that the motion and what passes would dispose of one way or other the resolution, yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution as written.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if, just a point of order, because the resolution was not actually in the original agenda materials, does the board want the resolution read as part of the record?
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution regarding claims asserted by current and former sheriff's deputies, whereas the board has received pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Sections 15.21243 et cetera, notices of claims, the claims dated July 10, 2012, asserted by 63 current and former sheriff's deputies, the claimants, and whereas the claimants assert they are entitled to certain compensation damages in attorney's fees pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Sections 9.1-700 et cetera, and the provisions of the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, specifically 29 U.S.C. Section 207, subsection O, and whereas county staff, including the county attorney and the county's retained counsel, have reviewed the form and substance of the claims and have investigated the factual and legal bases for the claims and have advised the board regarding same, and whereas the county has previously offered payments to sheriff's deputies other than the claimants regarding matters involving the provisions of Virginia Code Sections 9.1-700 et cetera, in exchange for releases of the county and the sheriff from any claims as to such matters, and whereas over one-half of the sheriff's deputies other than the claimants have agreed to the payments offered by the county in exchange for releases of the county and the sheriff, and whereas based upon the foregoing, the board finds that approval of the claims at the present time without both the county and the sheriff being released from the claims would not be appropriate, and whereas however, the board remains committed to the resolution of any matters involving compensation received by the claimants. Now therefore be it resolved that the board denies the claims without prejudice to the re-presentation of the claims to the board in the future, and be it further resolved that the board authorizes the county administrator, the county attorney, and such other appropriate county staff and/or the county's retained counsel to offer to the claimants in settlement of their claims a payment in the collective amount of $73,389.59, with the individual amounts by claimant set forth in the attachment here, too, provided that, one, each individual claimant shall execute a release of any and all claims against the county, the Board of Supervisors, the sheriff, and any and all of their agents, officers, and employees arising out of the same transactions and occurrences as set forth in the claims, and, two, as the claims made assertions under the FLSA, each such release shall be subject to the approval of the United States District Court for the Western District of Virginia in the pending litigation titled Baber versus County of Frederick, Virginia, et al., case number 5:12-CV00037MFUJGW, and be it further resolved that the foregoing offers for settlement purposes only does not constitute an admission by the county as to any particular conduct, and this resolution and the fact of its approval shall not be admissible in any litigation or other proceeding adopted this 26th day of September, 2012. I'll dispense with reading the names in dollar amounts, but they will obviously be part of the resolution if it is adopted. There are 63 names with respective dollar amounts.
Confirmation, please, of the motion maker and the second?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All right, now discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Spicer?
It strikes me that the two figures that have been cited by the respective parties, the 220,000 and the 73,000, the, most of the difference between those two figures is as a result of the doubling of the principal amount as a result of a potential finding of willfulness. The figures set forth in the resolution at $73,000 assigns a zero litigation value to that question, and I don't think that it can be dismissed so readily. I don't know, and I don't think that there's a lot of judicial precedence on what constitutes willfulness in this area, and as a result, it strikes me that I would encourage the parties to try to come to some dollar figure that represents a resolution of that question. And with the $73,000 number in the resolution, again, the county is assigning the risk of that at zero, and I don't think that that's appropriate.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Collins?
I have a question for Mr. Williams. The figures on the back that you have assigned to each individual litigant, that's based upon the settlement that we've already made with all the other deputies?
It is.
If a deputy were to, if a individual's litigant here and wanted to remove themselves from litigation and settle with the county, that's, this is the figure that we'd be using for them?
Hypothetically speaking, so, obviously. That would be their choice to do so.
Other questions? I guess I have a wild one I hadn't thought of before here. If the county had any interest in dealing with the attorney's fees accumulated by these deputies, is it appropriate?
In terms of discussions, Mr. Chairman? Certainly so. We're at a phase in the litigation where we're undertaking some activities right now, and I think, you know, practically at any time, discussions can take place. We've had discussions through the respective council representing the sides, and I mean, I think we all anticipate that those discussions will continue and be ongoing. Certainly, that's a desirable outcome for all, as I think is usually the case in any litigation. It's usually better for the parties to resolve it than to fight it.
If the folks on the other side were interested in this and we wanted to have some latitude given to those who are negotiating here, do we need to do anything?
I think perhaps the best way of doing it, because obviously negotiating, so to speak, in a public setting can be very difficult because it reveals bottom or top-line positions, is, I think, certainly either via a closed session or the like, the board could discuss with council parameters for settlements, settlement discussions, and then council could take that back to opposing council and try and working on it, hashing out a settlement. But the board could certainly authorize discussions in a range, but again, for obvious reasons, wouldn't be prudent for the board, I don't think, to throw that number, whatever that number might be out here, but certainly the board can do so in a private sense.
Other discussion? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Williams, as I understand this resolution, this doesn't close the door. It merely formally states our position at this point, and that we're still open if need be for negotiations.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, we have a potential expenditure here, so I'll do the voice vote. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer?
No.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Resolution is approved. Next is the Finance Committee report. Before Supervisor Ewing starts, I apologize to the board for being part of the reason they didn't have a quorum. I forgot the meeting.
We will forgive you this time.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee, September 19. As you stated, we did not have a quorum. However, all items are forwarded to the board with favorable consent. Item one is information-only. The finance director presented an FY12 year-end financial information, which we reviewed thoroughly in our budget work session prior to this meeting. The NRA CD superintendent requests a GLF supplemental appropriation in the amount of $491,777. This amount represents FY13. This amount represents FY13 budget amendments, I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, any discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The MIS Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $21,018. This amount represents a carryforward of unspent funds from FY12 needed for the lease of the new AS400. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a Lake Holiday Sanitary District Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $773,099.38. This amount represents debt payments and fees. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,331.16. This amount represents a partial reimbursement for electronic cram training. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Spicer, any discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $371,270.16. This amount represents unspent FY12 funds for the following amounts, $70,762.53 federal meth grant salary funding funds remaining, approval has been granted to use the funds to purchase equipment, $3,880 funds for the cost of fiscals and psychological testing for potential new employees, $2,355.82 forfeiture asset funds for the purchase of Ballistic Fest, $280,592.81 Phase II of the Laptop Project, $13,679 New Bain AG, GAG grant awarded to the purchase of vehicle equipment. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of these transfers.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school operating fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $25,000. This amount represents funds received in FY12 for the mentor teacher program. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
This is the 1.1 million that we discussed in our earlier meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the 5.8 or whatever that number was.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other discussion. All right, hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,331.16. This amount represents a partial reimbursement for electronic cram training. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Spicer, any discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $371,270.16. This amount represents unspent FY12 funds for the following amounts, $70,762.53 federal meth grant salary funding funds remaining, approval has been granted to use the funds to purchase equipment, $3,880 funds for the cost of fiscals and psychological testing for potential new employees, $2,355.82 forfeiture asset funds for the purchase of Ballistic Fest, $280,592.81 Phase II of the Laptop Project, $13,679 New Bain AG, GAG grant awarded to the purchase of vehicle equipment. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of these transfers.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
This is the 1.1 million that we discussed in our earlier meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the 5.8 or whatever that number was.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other discussion. All right, hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
This is the 1.1 million that we discussed in our earlier meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the 5.8 or whatever that number was.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other discussion. All right, hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents funds received in FY12 for the mentor teacher program. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
This is the 1.1 million that we discussed in our earlier meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the 5.8 or whatever that number was.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other discussion. All right, hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a Lake Holiday Sanitary District Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $700,000,99.38. This amount represents debt payments and fees. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The School Finance Director requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
This is the 1.1 million that we discussed in our earlier meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It's a part of the 5.8 or whatever that number was.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other discussion. All right, hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion. Hearing done, Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a general fund and school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000,128,002. This amount represents the unspent FY12 funds in the school operating fund. FY12 year-end and financial reports are provided for information, local funds are required. Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton.
Hey, could you look at your list, did you read off 165-608-05? 168-608.05, was that on there?
Oh, is that an error?
That has to do with the waiver that the Planning Commission wasn't recommending?
Did I not read it, or?[1319.91] 165-90104 Expansions and Modifications. 165-90106 Restoration and Replacement. Is there anyone, nope, we've got a few more here. Chapter 144 Subdivision of Land. 144.4 Subdivision Administrator. 144.5 Interpretations and Appeals. 144.6 Streets, excuse me, 144.17 Streets. 144.18 Sidewalks and Pedestrian Walkways. 144.19 Streetlights. 144.21 Stormwater Management. 144.25 Utilities and Easements. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I have approved, moved for adoption of the proposed ordinance changes.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton.
Hey, could you look at your list? Did you read off 165-608-05?
Repeat.
Was that on there?
Oh, is that an error?
That has to do with the waiver that the Planning Commission wasn't recommending.
Did I not read it, or?
I don't think it's in there. I don't think it's in there.
One right after the buffers and screening, height limitation.
Right. That's 609, he's six, but I didn't hear.
Is one missing?
If we could clarify, I think, you know, as we go through this, that if the board concurs with what the Planning Commission recommended, then I think that eliminates the need to modify that particular waiver request.
Is there a change to it? Looking for an easy way here. If there's no change, then it might not matter.
If there is no change, there is a change actually. It goes to the Board of Supervisors.
So it's a change to the Board of Supervisors?
That's correct.
So Mr. Williams, help me out, but if it's a problem, we can do everything but it and come back to get it at a later meeting, since it was not advertised.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think the board has two choices there. The board could either go ahead and make the advertise change, which is simply to change the waiver from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, and then at a subsequent meeting, if it's the board's pleasure, delete the waiver provision entirely. Or the board could just leave the provision as is right now, and likewise, at a future meeting, go ahead and delete it. But I'm not sure that the deletion of the entire concept of that waiver was within the scope of the advertisement, so it probably needs to be taken up as a separate matter.
So we would basically act upon what was advertised, and staff can proceed with the next step at a subsequent meeting?
Yes, sir.
That was the intent of my motion.
How did you catch that, Mr. Lofton?
I just had a keen eye for that EM zoning there. Has been an issue before, and it didn't appear that it was going to be.
You have my admiration. Okay, I think I'm in a motion and a second, and Mr. Lofton has pointed out that everything in the handout was not included in the advertisement, so we will not be considering 165-60805 because it is not advertised. Everyone clear on the motion? Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Spicer.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Next is a planning item, a rezoning application, 06-12 Willow Run Revised Proffer relating to transportation enhancements. My understanding, it's a minor modification not requiring a public hearing.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Under the relatively recent changes to state code, as a minor proffer amendment, this does not require a public hearing. What you have before you, I believe you're all familiar with the Willow Run rezoning that was done some time back now, that is a mixed-use, commercial and residential rezoning. They are wanting to modify some of the language in their proffer specifically to deal with If you can see on the screen to your left, we have a general outline of that development. I would just point out that there's a bit of a donut hole that I'm zooming in on here that consists of property controlled by Dr. Gordon, as well as one small piece that was part of the original rezoning that actually had a fairly nice house in its own regard on, which the applicant in the meantime has subdivided off and sold to someone who is not part of this application. And you should see that referenced in some of Mr. Williams's comments. And here you have a little bit more specific outline of what the development is supposed to be. And the specific proffer modifications that we're discussing today involve the timing of the implementation of the interchange itself between the future dual early drive extension and Route 37, as well as the timing of a potential dedication of five acres for a county aquatic center, which would be centered on that quadrant there, which currently is traversed by existing Merriman's Lane. To get into the specifics of the language modifications that are being done with this rezoning, B2, proffer B2 deals with the potential aquatic center. At the time of the original rezoning in 2009, the county was given five years to determine if they would like to request that dedication. That five years under the existing proffers up in 2014, the revised language allowed for a three-year window beginning in 2012 and ending in 2015. Moving on to the other proffer of note is D5. That is the one that deals with the timing of the interchange construction. Previously, the proffer guaranteed that construction on that interchange would begin in calendar year 2012 and completed by 2015, or by the 600th building permit, whichever were to come first. The new language calls for that to begin by calendar year 2017, be completed by 2022, once again, or by the 600th building permit. Couple of other proffers that are in the existing proffers, which you no longer see, frankly dealt with items specific to the city of Winchester. One was a right-of-way, right-of-way which has been transferred to the city, and the other had to do with $100,000 in cash payments, which have been made since those have been realized and confirmed to us by the city that those have been realized. Those were removed from the language. When the Planning Commission heard this item, they did recommend approval. They did spend some time discussing the timing of, frankly, they spent more time talking about the timing of the potential aquatic center land, because they felt like, whereas before, that window was better lined up with the road construction. Under the new timings, it is not. However, they do recommend approval with the caveat that they think that there should be a direction to Parks and Rec to go ahead and request that property. With that, I can take any questions you may have.
Questions of Mr. Bishop. Thank you. Did the applicant wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't have really anything to add to Mr. Bishop's presentation, but I'm available if you have questions.
Think we might have one.
Okay.
Questions?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
Mr. Wyatt, I note that there's a proposed change from an extension of one year to three years to give the county the ability to make a decision on the aquatic center in a little less constrained timeframe. Is that a problem from the applicant's perspective?
The discussion actually became more of it becoming really, in our opinion, a moot point altogether. When the county adopted the recent capital improvements plan, the aquatic center that is now planned is scoped at an eight-to-12 acre facility. And I believe that was done so they could locate things other than the aquatic center, which makes a lot of sense. By the CIP doing that, in essence, they've worked their way out of this project altogether, in our opinion. So we had originally asked if they had any desire to be there, and the response that we got back was they would prefer to keep a five-year clock running. So the question was never really answered to us. Planning staff brought it to our attention. The owners agreed to give another year for Parks and Rec to make a decision, but the more we thought about it, it really doesn't seem like this is the right place for them to be anyway, because the site that we had talked about back in 2006 doesn't appear to be sufficient for what they're looking for.
Thank you.
Other questions? Unfortunately, Mr. Wyatt, I think probably I join Mr. Spicer and the rest of the board in that the material we gave us was very unclear on this issue. Do we have staff here who can help us? There's no use to lobby for something that's not desired, but all we had was a request from Parks that it be longer, and non-attention to that in the material from the applicant. So we didn't know what was going on here.
Right. The only thing I can tell you is back when we did the original rezoning around 2006, the supervisor of the Gainsborough District asked if there was a potential to consider an aquatic center site within the commercial area of the project. And the owners at that time felt that was appropriate, and the discussion was a five-acre site. And the discussion that we had with the director at that point in time was this quadrant right here, which is five acres. So that's where it started. And then after the rezoning was approved, there was never any activity by Parks and Rec over the last six years to engage the owners of any discussion of wanting to be there. That's best I can fill in the blanks from there.
I think our spot is, we have a letter from Parks, and that's all we have, where they did ask for an extension. And I guess what Mr. Spicer and I are wondering, did the developer, is the developer saying no? Not the reasons, but did you say no? All we have is a request.
The developer agreed to the additional year extension through 2015, not for an additional five years.
That's all that the developer is willing to do?
That's where they are, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. The five acres being proffered for the aquatic center. If the county would like to call that proffer in the timeframe that's stated, but did not have designs put an aquatic center there, is that allowed? I guess that's a staff question as opposed to.
The proffer does not stipulate that, for example, a comparable question is the new Roundhill Fire Station. There was a caveat that a site plan be filed within a certain period of time of the land changing hands. That does not, that's not part of this proffer.
So the county could call the five acres, and the disposition of the five acres be left up to the county?
That's, well, there's not a timeline for you to perform a site plan, but it's not that you could take the five acres and then do something different than an aquatic center. The proffer stipulates that the land is for an aquatic center.
Could not be used for a park.
Correct.
To the best of staff's knowledge, did Park change his mind, or is the request still outstanding?
Can I help you out a little bit here? I think Parks and Rec has been concerned with the CIP and the aquatic center on the CIP, and the value of that aquatic center in this economy. And I think the Parks and Rec Commission is more interested in revisiting a much more scaled-down project because of the reality of the situation. And they were concerned, should they continue to be a placeholder here until that issue is resolved? And I think that was their concern. Do they just let it go, or do they keep it as a placeholder on a much more scaled-down project?
Okay, back to you, Mr. Wyatt. If I dream a little bit here, and we're in the same position at the end of that timetable that we are now, and the county says, yeah, I probably want an aquatic center, but never builds it, that's not in your own best interest.
Nor the county's.
But they would probably do that just to play safe. We'd be forcing their hand at the end of that time period to do something. And if they hadn't done anything else, my best guess, they'd say, I'll exercise. Have we thought through this to make sure that we have come up with the right place for Parks, the right place for the developer? Are we sure this is the right place to be? Because that's what will happen.
The.
Changes, they'll exercise.
Yeah, the discussion back when the economy was in very good times was a lot different, and the feelings were a lot different. The developers believe it's probably in the county's best interest to let this go and become economic development, revenue-generating land use.
But I would tell you that if there's no improvement, everything's as it is, and they don't have an aquatic center, they'll exercise just in the event that they, that's the only thing they've got going.
The one flaw with the proffer, the way it was originally drafted, was there was no performance requirement on the county's side should they exercise the land right.
So if they did exercise it within the time span, they eventually did not build there, then they'd have to revert to property. And we have a mess on our hands with disposition of surplus property.
Yes, sir.
Take a shot at it, but you haven't convinced me that we did what was best for the developer and best for the county here.
We certainly did not do what was best for the developer's interest on my side. The question really becomes though, does Parks and Rec want to be at this location? And, you know, once again, since the initial discussions that were had in 2006, nobody's ever communicated with the property owners.
So I guess my question to you is, would you rather have a, probably not, but I don't know, exercise of a proffer lot? Or a, I don't have to decide right now, so we postpone for a longer period of time? Did the revision say the right thing?
Yeah, if I had, if I had my druthers, if the county was interested in keeping the five-acre site in play for a decision, we would definitely want to protect the owner's interest if that property was transferred over to the county through a performance requirement of some sort that was reasonable.
I've taken this discussion as far as I can. I have a concern here that.
Mr. Chairman, I've been very close with the Parks and Rec Commission, and they have spoken no interest in aquatic center anywhere right now based upon the budgetary constraints. Maybe it'd be prudent for me to take this back to the Parks and Rec Commission, say, you've got this five acres, it's sitting there, it's supposed to be an aquatic center, which is what the proffers were, and see what they deem, if they would deem that to be something they're going to do in any time in the near future. I don't see, what's the deadline on this, 2015? Is that what we're talking about?
The extension that we have with this current proffer gives the county through the end of 2015 to make that decision.
So that would mean that the Parks and Rec would have to come up with, in essence, the funding for it within the next 36 months in order to execute there?
The only way Supervisor Collins can get there is a postponement of the vote, correct?
That's correct.
I just think that maybe having Parks and Rec Commission's input on this, since this is a question that clearly has not been answered in six years.
And Chairman Chickle, if that was the desire of the board to give Mr. Collins an opportunity to do so, I would prefer that we do wait until they've had that meeting, and as long as we can get this back before the end of the calendar year, because that's when the 2012 commitment on the interchange is supposed to be.
Now, repeat what you just said, before the what?
Before the end of this calendar year, I would like this to come back for action.
This calendar year?
Yes. And if there is going to be a delay, I'll tell you that we would also like to put in the stipulation of what the performance should be on the county's side should they exercise the land right.
Personally, I don't speak for the board. I think to be very prudent, a longer period of time, but a performance requirement sounds got good business to me, but I don't want to speak for the board. Anybody else have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I understand the urgency on one part, and that is VDOT can rescind the access, their break-in access to 37, so that is an issue. But I agree also that it certainly would be prudent to even negotiate what that five acres could be, might be, should be.
And I think it would be good for us to know what the Parks and Rec Commission really desires to do. Is it an eight-to-12 acre facility that has things, or is it?
I'd assume that part of that is that we would agree with what they want to do too.
Right, sure.
I guess I just was trying to avoid a exercise your option because you might. And then you don't, and you end up with property that's not used, that's surplus property. I just.
I agree.
Can't work that out a little better. But anyway, Supervisor Ewing?
I just, I wanted you to finish that part of the discussion, but is there any other designated areas in your development for parks?
The, if I don't do this right.
Or did we give you any credit for recreational facilities for this?
The way that the master plan and the proffer is done, the owners have an area down in here, which is a community recreational area. The proffer says that if the aquatic center option is not, in other words, if there's not an aquatic center there, the applicant is required to put in a community center building and a swimming pool facility of substantial size. And then there's other pocket park areas in there, but if the aquatic center did not land there, there would still be a community building and pool facility, but it would be exclusively for the Willow Run residents.
But if the aquatic center is built, that will not be, that will not happen.
That's correct. They're not required to put the pool in at that point.
Good question. Other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Wyatt, hasn't this deadline been pushed back previously already?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that leads me to the observation that we've assumed kind of out of hand that Parks and Rec will exercise that option simply to avoid having it expire and not exercising it, but is that a valid assumption? I frankly don't think it is, given the CIP contemplates a larger facility, as well as my personal view, which is, when I think of an aquatic center in Frederick County, that's not the place that I think of it being. So I'm certainly happy to defer the matter. I think that if we did go forward tonight, my sense is that Parks and Recs would not exercise the option.
That'd be my sense as well, but I think that giving them the option to let them know and let them give us some feedback on this issue, I think is important.
Mr. Chairman? May another question. VDOT's allowance for break-in access, how long a period does that last from time to time? Because I noticed you pushed out the completion from three years to five years.
The owner has done the right-of-way dedication, the design plans which have been approved. They've kept the design plans current through the five-year cycles, and they've pulled a permit that they keep active. So we're still okay there.
But the permit is, once it's issued, it stays in? Stays in effect, or it's reviewed every so often and renewed?
I believe it's an annual permit, is it not?
It's a five-year.
Okay, five-year.
Five-year. So you're looking, you'd have to come back again one more time if you wouldn't have started until 2015?
If the proffer amendment is approved with the extension, the permit Mr. Comrade just mentioned is updated in June of 2013, which carries through June of 2018. And that's, the new trigger for the commencement is 2017, so the permit would be active.
Would, one more question. If the county were to decide that the five acres is not a good, how would I say, not a good use of land, like say, we wouldn't want to have it and not take full potential use of it, is there any room for negotiating the development impact model fees as opposed to the five acres of land? Because I noticed they're 2005 figures and.
You're asking the wrong person that question.
Okay.
I would have to bring that back from the applicants.
Options are always welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Wyatt, I have one quick one that your staff may be able to answer. What magisterial district is that this these days?
This is now Gainsborough. When we resigned it, it was Shawnee, and now it's Gainsborough.
All right, if there's no more questions, time for the applicant. Thanks, sir. Mr. Spicer.
I would, I would make a motion that, and I apologize, I don't, I always get the correct term wrong. I'm looking for the concept of postponing. That's the correct word.
Postponing the vote for something before the end of the year.
Right. That's.
I suggest the first board meeting in November.
That would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone until the first meeting in November. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Spicer?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Our next item is a resolution directing staff to undertake a water and sewer service area expansion study to evaluate land vicinity of Lord Fairfax Community College and to incorporate land owned by Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation north of the town of Middletown. Go ahead, sir.
I believe we.
Something? Oh, yes, excuse me. A request for, I can read on that again. Request for, request for.
Just practice.
2164 North Sleepy Creek Road. Go ahead, sir. My apologies.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of board. Before you tonight is a pump and haul permit for property that's located 1.5 miles off of Route 522 North. At the property address is 2164 North Sleepy Creek Road. It's currently zoned RA, and it's the Gainsborough Magisterial District. Property, if you look to your left at the map, kind of outlines where the property is off of Sleepy Creek Road. Currently, this property, there's a one-bedroom structure on this property, and it has no record of a health system ever being permitted through the county of Frederick. To give you an idea, this is a, staff has gone up and taken some pictures of the property. This is a, pictures of the property as of just today. Again, it's a one-bedroom structure. It's been in the county since 1970. If I went too fast, if you want me to switch back, I can pull it back, if you want to get a better look at it. Again, the property was cited by the Health Department through a complaint basis of not having improved drain field. The staff from the Health Department did go out and evaluate the property for a drain field, per our drain field regulations which changed, I think, two years ago, that this board took on the change. The staff from the Health Department did go out and evaluate the property for a drain field per our drain field regulations, which changed, I think, two years ago that this board took on the change. They found that, and I think it's in their memo, or the memo was sent to you, their correspondent dated July 13, 2012, they could not find any place for a drain field to serve this property. Part of it was the soils and things of that nature. I would note for the record that the applicant also could not get any easements for this property, which is part of our criteria that we had set forth. The applicant has applied, again, for the pump and haul, and also has worked a contract up with the septic system, or service operator, and his license in the county of Frederick, and Commonwealth of Virginia to do business. They've put a contract which is also put together as a requirement that we have when we change our pump and haul requirements to come before the board. And currently, it also should be noted that this request, as far as compliance, it meets sort of a criteria, though easements is a big issue to keep in mind, that they could not be, could not get, but it does meet the requirements to come in front of you in terms of not having a health system for you to either, you know, for board action. So staff is looking for board action on this request, and to either approve the permit of pump and haul, or deny the permit of pump and haul. I'll try to answer any questions you have. I don't think the applicant is here on this request, and I'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Supervisor Lofton.
May or may not be related, is the residence currently inhabited?
Yes, it is. Actually, it is inhabited.
Mr. Chairman, is it the case that most of these pump and haul permit requests are as a result of a system having failed as opposed to never having one been installed?
That is correct. They use your systems, the last ones since we've changed the ordinance that you, that this board has seen has been either failures, but we've never, as far as my knowledge, have one, the system's never been installed or never been approved. So I would have to say that, yeah, this is kind of unique.
And as a follow-up, is the property owner going to have to install some sort of tank that would be the reservoir for...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Spicer. We'll note in the note, and I'm going to point out, because this is kind of a unique situation, that I believe, anyway, since I've worked in the county, the applicant, or back in 1970, the letter, the applicant said that they had had some tanks installed, they weren't approved by anyone, and we don't have any record in the county at all of them being approved. And that's what started the violations and so forth that got us here tonight.
So are those the tanks that the owner contemplates using?
No, sir, I don't believe there's any there, if the Health Department's walking over it all.
Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the board approve the request for the pump and haul permit at 2164 North Sleepy Creek Road.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Spicer?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes no, but the motion passes. And if we could just stay on this subject one more time?
All right, Mr. Chairman, sir.
...that we were provided a copy of from the Health Department. The last line on it says, authorize pump and haul to be issued, signed. That's a very misleading note on that. I assume that's a Health Department official? If you could quiz them about the necessity of having that form, say that if I was handed that form by the applicant, I would assume I was ready to go, not that I had to go to the Board of Supervisors and get approval.
Yes, sir, we'll, I'll, we'll take care of that, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next is a resolution directing staff to undertake a sewer and water service area expansion study to evaluate land in vicinity of Lord Fairfax Community College and to incorporate land owned by Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation north of the town of Middletown. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The last meeting, this was brought to the attention and by Supervisor Lofton, so therefore the resolution was prepared for you this evening to direct staff to move forward with a comprehensive plan study in this area of Lord Fairfax Community College. So I believe the resolution speaks for itself. A vicinity map has been provided which shows the property in particular in question, and of course, the resolution directs us to look at this property in addition to the surrounding properties and evaluate the appropriateness of a comp plan amendment to adjust the sewer and water service area in this location. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Supervisor DeHaven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal, is this currently served by the town of Middletown?
The community college is presently served by the town of Middletown for sewer. Water is provided via the city of Winchester.
Okay. And the proposal would be this expansion would be served by those same folks?
Yes, sir.
What area are you proposing to be studied, or has that been determined yet?
I think that will be determined as we get the group together, but generally speaking, if I may, take a moment here to recognize, of course, the existing Lord Fairfax Community College campus with the majority of the buildings being up front here on Route 11. So of course, we have Route 11 that provides one boundary, and Interstate 81 provides the other. So I would suggest that properties both north of the Lord Fairfax Community College in this area, and this area would be evaluated. Of course, this is the, Middletown Elementary School is located immediately to the northeast. While the study is occurring, I believe we should also look at areas to the west of Route 11, and that probably would be back towards where the railroad tracks are located. And I think the study would also kind of connect with the town of Middletown to ensure that their comprehensive plan was recognized as we look here north of the town of Middletown. We'll point out that the community college themselves, on the foundation property, they have some building projects that they're looking to move forward with, so we're working with them to try and enable them to move forward with their projects while at the same time, look at the surrounding properties and do somewhat of a thorough plan. So as we get into the next discussion item, the Comprehensive Plan Committee will meet on October the 8th, and we'll start and then see the best approach to achieving what we're looking to do.
How will the investigative process handle a current situation where the city provides water and perhaps a lack of desire for the city to serve any more of the businesses or industries in Frederick County? Contact with the sanitation authority, or how will that work? There won't be an assumption that that's the only way... Well, there?
No, not till what we'll do is certainly work with the sanitation authority to find their perspective, at the same time, work through the city of Winchester, and of course, the town of Middletown, to understand everybody's positions. And I think engaging everybody is an important part of this, this process, in addition to the adjacent property owners.
I mean, I personally am glad that the city of Winchester was able to help Lord Fairfax out. I don't know about the school, but to consider the city continuing to serve more and more development in the county...
I think...
I just want to make sure it gets looked at hard.
Very much so. Obviously, we, over the years, have reinforced the policies that support our own sewer and water service area, our own SWAZA, an open development area. This is somewhat unique as it is down adjacent to the town of Middletown. But I know that the college has had an ongoing relationship with both the city and the town, and I think would continue to work with that relationship.
Other questions? Are we ready to vote? First, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we direct staff to undertake a SWAZA expansion study to evaluate land in the vicinity of Lord Fairfax Community College and to incorporate land owned by the Lord Fairfax Community College Foundation north of the town of Middletown.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing none. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. The resolution is approved. Next is a resolution directing staff to undertake an eastern road plan study of relocated Route 522 South in the proximity of Costello Drive. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your screen is a general location map which identifies the eastern road plan, and of course, that's the focus of this particular request. So with direction from the Board of Supervisors, staff will then take this to the Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting in October. Simultaneously, Mr. Bishop will be working with the Transportation Committee to bring them on board and address the request that was, of course, a modification to the eastern road plan based on the 522 relocation and the Interstate 81 improvement plans that were completed several years ago.
Questions of staff? Hearing none. Mrs. Shawnee?
Yes, sir. I would make a motion directing staff to undertake an eastern road plan study of relocated Route 522 South in the proximity to Costello Drive.
I think it's actually approval of the resolution, is it not? I believe, yes. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Board liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments, does anyone here would like to address the board? I see one hand. Come forward, please, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hey, Chairman Schickel and Board Supervisors. My name is Ernie Carnavale. I'm actually from Loudoun County, if that's okay, but I work in Winchester at 333 West Cork Street, which is the offices and the inpatient care facility for Blue Ridge Hospice. As many of you know, this is a milestone year for our not-for-profit hospice organization as we're celebrating our 30th anniversary. We were founded by two area residents, Helen Zbarth and Gail Rogers, and we have grown and greatly expanded our services in response to the community need and healthcare changes. We now provide hospice care to eight area counties, including Frederick County, the city of Winchester. And last year, our 200 employees traveled 604,000 miles to care for our patients in their homes, nursing and assisted living facilities, and local hospitals. 11 years ago, we served about 405 patients, and last year, we served 1,054. We own and operate six thrift shops, which provide good value shopping, a place to donate no longer needed items, as well as the income to help defray hospice care for our patients who can't afford services. In addition to our six shops, we also operate a closed baling operation in Winchester that recycles clothing and soft goods that are not sold in our thrift shops. As a not-for-profit hospice, last year, we returned $350,000 in charity care to these patients and their families. Now, why are all these facts and figures important for you tonight to hear? Because as part of the area's not-for-profit community, Blue Ridge Hospice is concerned about yellow, white, but predominantly blue clothing bins that are popping up in Frederick County, Winchester, at shopping centers, convenience stores, and also in well-traveled rural places, which I'm sure you've seen these. Most likely, you've seen them, and perhaps you even thought, well, they probably belong to Blue Ridge Hospice or another local not-for-profit organization. They do not. Actually, these bins have no local connection to this community or any of the communities that Blue Ridge Hospice serves. And under further investigation, it reveals that using these bins, they only do is siphon funds away from our community and from other local not-for-profit organizations such as the Salvation Army, Goodwill, the SPCA, Habitat for Humanity, the Winchester Medical Center thrift shop, and yes, Blue Ridge Hospice. Additionally, as our staff travels to the areas we serve, we are noticing that these bins are often becoming dumping places, creating litter, and turning into community eyesores. My request to you is to consider passing an ordinance, such as many other communities have already done, to prohibit these drop-off of these bins. The city of Winchester and the town of Berryville are currently considering gathering more information with the thought of taking some form of action. I've included a sample ordinance form, ordinance from one of the communities that is dealing with this problem already.
Go ahead, sir.
On behalf of Blue Ridge Hospice, I'm appreciative to the opportunity to come before you this evening, and if it is appropriate, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time and attention.
Not questions, but I would appreciate it if you'd give staff the locations of any sites that you're aware of.
In Frederick County?
Yes, sir. Just in Frederick County.
Sure will. I'll send...
The resolution to us.
Okay.
Right?
The ordinance?
The ordinance, you've given...
I've given you a copy. I've given packets for all those...
Items, sir, if you would.
I would be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schickel.
Any other citizens? All right, Board of Supervisors, comments? I have one. Mr. Riley, I ask you in the work session, did you need a motion? And then I want Mr. Tibbs to check, I'm afraid I did consensus on the public hearing. Is that what I did? And if I did, will that suffice, or do we need a motion to go to public hearing on the budget amendment? I fear that I did a consensus.
You got a consensus on a proposed scenario?
I'm sorry, Mr. Riley, I didn't, I was asleep at the switch. Do you need a motion?
That would be preferable. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Can you folks remember who was where on that whole issue? And those of you that prevailed, one of you make a motion in a second. It was to take a...
I believe it was $3.9 million appropriation to public hearing at the October board...
That's proposal, I believe.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
You have two no's. Did you get those? Let's go down the row. Mr. Spicer?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Chair votes aye. And I apologize to the board for not following my instructions, and hopefully that keeps us from running afoul of anything that makes it illegal. Any other Board of Supervisors' comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing?
Move for adjournment.
Do you have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Meeting adjourned.